Call to order the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. We'll begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First item up this evening is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is no change to your Order of Business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Are any questions on the Order of Business as presented? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the Commissioners wish to discuss?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into Administration and Finance this evening. First presentation is our summer program. This will be presented by Marketing and Events Director Fong.
Good evening, Mayor Decker and City Commissioners. I appreciate the update, the opportunity to give an update from my office in Marketing and Events. We advertise on our website that Dickinson is the place where career and family meet. That's certainly true for my family. This evening, we have a soccer, softball, baseball triple header right after this, so I appreciate the opportunity to bat leadoff tonight. I'll preview the summer at Legacy Square soon, but first I thought I'd touch on a couple other areas where I've been asked in my new role to be involved. First, we have a video podcast studio here at City Hall. It's right behind that door, and we're using it. My department has branded our podcast as The Square Deal, and on a weekly basis, we are conducting fun and casual interviews featuring leaders, legends, and lifestyle in our community. The Square Deal is a reference to Legacy Square being our town square. It's also a Teddy Roosevelt reference. Square Deal is what you would want, all citizens would want from their local government. I think it's helpful to everyone when we have a chance to meet the men and women as human beings who are in the arena, as Teddy would say. We encourage folks to subscribe to the city's YouTube channel to follow that content. For example, tomorrow's episode will be with Leah Upchurch of the Public Works Department. They have Family Fun Day at Legacy Square on Thursday evening, free to attend. Next, a youth commission update. As you may know, my background is as a high school social studies teacher, administrator, and coach. The coach in me would describe the city youth commission as a bit of a rebuilding project. We did not have any youth attendees at the May meeting of the youth commission. There were many conflicts, but we had a productive June meeting. We now have an application window open through Friday, June 27th, for next year's class. We have at least six good applicants in from both Dickinson High and from Trinity. Your bylaws on our website currently describe the youth commission as being intended for ages 15 through 18. That would be the high school grades. We did get a strong group of Dickinson Middle School eighth graders who attended the June meeting as interested observers. It may or may not make sense in the future to open up the youth commission to the eighth grade. The jury is out. I will come back to you at a later time maybe with a recommendation there. I also attended the Rough Rider Commission meeting last night. First thing I said to that group is thank you for all that they do for Rough Rider Days for many years. There are some areas where now they are partnering with the city to carry out their events. I'm just a middleman there. Finally, Legacy Square, and you've got a small print version that was the June 12th draft, but of course, we have a lot happening at Legacy Square. As you know, this summer's schedule was almost entirely built before I arrived. Now, my job is to do my best to carry it out while learning along the way. We were fortunate to be able to work with a contractor to complete minor maintenance to concrete on a couple problem areas near the splash pad. We got that work done last week when we had a poor air quality day and a cold and rainy day, and then we were back up and running by the weekend when it was sunny and 75. So, I'm grateful for that. We now look forward to a great summer of 2025 at Legacy Square with a lot going on, headlined by the four Live at Legacy Square concert nights every other Thursday evening, beginning Thursday, July 3rd, with Brian White taking the stage at 7:30 and Sawyer Brown at 9 o'clock. Again, thank you for the opportunity to represent the city through marketing and events. If you have any questions, I'm available. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. Any questions, or Mr. Fong? All right.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna have a busy evening, so you better get to it. Our next item up is we have Library Board appointments, and this evening, this will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So, we had a meeting of the Library Board, and we had interviews, and we had great candidates that went through, but the Library Board is recommending Troy Kuntz for a second term. If appointed, this term would run from July 25 through July 28. And then, the library recommends Amanda Chorney, I hope I said that right, for a first-term appointment to fill the seat of outgoing Board Member Kop. If appointed, this term would run from July 25 through July 28. And we do have Amanda in the audience, who would be the new member of the Library Board if you have any questions or anything for her. The Library Board and the city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the Library Board's recommendations for their board members?
I will just comment, I sat in my first meeting, and that was the interviews, and we had three great candidates that we interviewed that day, and it was a tough choice, but we think Amanda will do a great job, so.
Any other comments? Now, I'd look for a motion on the recommendations from the Library Board.
I will make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Library appointees by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a couple of abatement hearings. This will be presented by City Assessor Hirschfeld.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. We do have two this evening. The first we will be hearing will be for 2566 State's Boulevard. They are filing for both the 23 and 24 valuation. The property owner brought a concern about the sketch on their property being incorrect. We sent staff out and found out indeed the was the wrong sized house and garage. We corrected for that, and since they are in the revaluation area, we went ahead and corrected the card for this coming year, and the valuation was slightly higher than what it was to begin with, so about an $8,000 increase with the corrected card. The property owner's concern was just with the size of the property, though, and liked the abatement to reflect what would the value been with just the sketch changed and nothing else. So, that would be the values on their request down below for 23 and 24 of 358,900 for 2023 and a 383, or basically 384,000 then for 2024 if we round that. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hirschfeld. So, the city staff is recommending the, I'm looking at this, 468 and 476?
The current value is 468,000. The corrected value would have been 476. We're not looking to change that value because it was after Board of Equalization. That would be part of the revaluation, and we weren't recommending a decrease because with the corrected card, it's actually slightly higher, but the property owner just wants the card to reflect the correct sketch.
Okay. And their request is 358 for 23, 384 for 24?
Correct.
Would those values have been correct if the sketch was right?
If we.
Originally, for 23 and 24, that's my question.
Correcting just the sketch, those would be the correct ones because we worked through those numbers with her.
So, other than the sketch being wrong, there was other items on the card that were incorrect?
So, part of the revaluation effort, what, you know, we've got people coming up all the time, so like the value on the basement, we had a very low-quality finish, the finish that's actually in the house is a living quarters quality, so that would have been part of the increase that we see now that wasn't on the card before. I can't remember all the items, but that was one of them that would have added value to it.
I mean, was that error made because that basement was finished when the house was built?
And it wasn't that we weren't showing finish, just not a high-quality finish, a bare-bones type finish, had, wasn't accurate with the quality of finish that we had on the card.
So, if we change 23 and 24 to what they're requesting, then in 25, they will go up to 476, is that what I understand?
25 is actually 468. The 476 would be next year's 26 value.
26 is? Anyone else?
Any other Commissioners have any questions? I'm personally, I'm fine with their request because they're gonna see an increase, so.
Yeah. With that, I would, I guess I would make a motion to change the value to 358,932 for 23 and 383,965 for 24.
To the owner's request.
To the owner's request.
All right, we have a motion to, to support the owner's request by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have another abatement here, Mr. Hirschfeld.
We do, President Decker, Commissioners. It would be for 2893 Third Avenue West. This is a commercial office building. The property owner on this structure believes that the value's too high. He's looking for a change from 637,300 down to 434,700. However, well, and this spring, he had invited me over to his property, did walk through the property and verified that the property record card was, was accurate, and the value that's on there came from the Vanguard reappraisal in 23. And in regard to a lower value that the, the owner believes is warranted, he didn't have any support or any, any sales or anything to, to support his request, and so our recommendation would be to make no change, as that was part of the revaluation effort, and there was no compelling data brought forward from the owner, so.
Did he, I will just, one caveat, I do have an office in this building, so I just want everybody to be aware of that, but before I ask my questions, I ran for Mr. Schwab, so. He didn't provide any income data to you?
He did not, no.
Mr. Hirschfeld, his, is, what was his main reason that he feels there's a 200, basically a $200,000 difference?
He, he didn't give a strong reason, he just believes that the current value's too Well, it's a feeling that many of us have in this community, even those who are in the business, that values are very high, so I understand his concern, but was looking for a little help with, with some support on how we might be able to change that, and I didn't get any.
Ms. Hirschfeld, what if we met him in the middle? Do we, do we drop it 100,000?
Well, Mr. President, Commissioner Baer, we could. The concern with that, without any, any support for lower values, then everybody would file an abatement and want to meet in the middle. That would be my concern.
And there was no, nothing structurally different that he could point out, any, anything that would lower the value? He just felt it was too high with no supporting documents?
Correct. We, we walked through the entire building, he and I, and, and went over the card point by point, and there was a slight difference in, oh, I think, the, the wall material, but that would have increased the value very slightly instead of removing any value, and so we didn't, we didn't make any change after I walked through it, and, you know, he still mentioned having a concern, and it's like, well, if you've got sales, he is a commercial realtor, and I said, I'll take any, take a look at anything you have, you know, anything that, give me a little support and, you know, a little evidence to maybe make a move, but there wasn't any.
And you've reviewed the supporting documentation from Vanguard to justify this value?
I'm sorry?
I said, you've reviewed the justification from Vanguard for this value?
Yes. And at the time of the, the Board of Equalization, when Vanguard was here, we had several office owners before us, and was able to support the, the office values on everybody who came
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer.
I, I guess one of the issues I do have, and I would agree with, with Mr. Hirschfeld here, is Mr. Schwab has offered no supporting documents, other than he, he wants $200,000 off his property and really not given any reason why. I would think if you would want to make such a request, you would have some type of documentation as to why you're requesting that much, so I do have an issue with that. Because unlike, like Mr. Hirschfeld said, we'll have everybody in this city come in here, telling us what they think they should pay for their property, without any supporting document, so.
So, we have three possible motions. Make no change to the true and full valuation, change to the value of the owner's request, and change value to some other amount, so. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to, to make no changes to the amount.
We have a motion to make no changes to the true and full valuation by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Our next up is a gaming site authorization for Dickinson State University, DSU Heritage Foundation. Mr. Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. This is a gaming site authorization request from the DSU Heritage Foundation for two locations, Scottschim located at 1104 Second Street West and the Bejew Activity Center located at 398 State Avenue North. The effective date at both of these locations would be July 1st, 2025 to June 30th of 2026, and this would allow them to conduct raffles at those two locations. City staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the DSU gaming authorizations? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is a Class A liquor license for commercial on and off sale. Mr. Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. We did receive a Class A liquor license, a commercial on-off sale liquor license transfer request. This would be for the Final Final Bar and Lounge located at 640 12th Street West. Rusty and Jamie Haynes would be removed from the liquor license, and Kristi Helverson and Clint Johnson would be added to the liquor license. City staff has reviewed the, the request, the application, and had conducted a background check on these changes. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the commercial liquor license changes for the final, final? Now, I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, you have a special election update?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Yesterday, candidate petitions were due by 4:00 PM Mountain Time at City Hall. We did receive four petitions, and they were certified by me yesterday after the deadline. After that, we did draw for the ballot order. As they appear, we have Matthew Rothstein, Amber Warner, Russell Murphy, and Dean Cluver. That is the order that those names will appear on the ballot for the special election coming up on August 18th. Some other important dates, absentee ballots for, to be available for voting will occur on July 19, July 9th. On July 10th, it will be the earliest date candidates can file campaign disclosure statements. On July 18th, the deadline for candidates to file campaign disclosure statement. And then, of course, on August 18th will be the date of the special election at the Bejew Activity Center, and the hours will be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Happy to answer any questions the Commission may have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the election update? Hearing no questions, we'll move to the next presentation, which is the Special Election Worker. This will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So, for the Special Election Officer, we are looking for the Inspector in Charge. The election inspector shall supervise the conduct of the election to ensure all election officials are properly performing their duties at the polling place. The inspector in charge shall assign duties and perform the election trainings. Linda Steve has verbally accepted the position and will be paid $21 an hour, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the Special Election Officer? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will now have our monthly financial report. This will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So, for our financial report, our balance of the general fund, as you can see, as of 5/31/2025 right now, is leaving the fund balance at $12 million, and you can see the transfers in, the transfers out, and then in revenues and expenditures. 1% sales tax monthly breakdown, we are just between the 24 and 25, and so we're trending a little bit higher, but we are not anywhere near where we were before on that. On the half percent sales tax, the same thing goes for that, and then for the sales tax comparison, we are still trending, for five months total, we are still trending higher than we have been in '24. Hospitality tax is right in where the 24 balances is just barely below, and then for the hospitality tax in five-month total, still running just a little bit higher than we were in '24. Our occupancy is higher than '24, but just a little lower than '23, and then again, occupancy has been running very well, and we're the highest of 114,909 in five-month total. Our oil impact revenue, I wish I could have better news, but it is just running steady, I will say that. It's kind of following the same trend, but it's still much lower than '24. And then, for the five-month total, we're just over about a million dollars short is where we're gonna be at in the five-month total compared to '24. Our general fund revenue collected and, and remaining, we are about halfway where we should be, so collected is at 57%, and then expended, we are at 39% in our general fund. Our utility revenues, collected is 39%, and then expended is around 31%, so they're still above their target benchmark. And I stand for any questions you may have on the financial report.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the financial report? Look for a motion to approve the financial report.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will have a presentation about the motor vehicle job descriptions. This will be presented by HR Director Nomenek.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. We have two job descriptions before you tonight. The first one will be the Branch Office Manager for the Motor Vehicle Department Branch Office. This position, some of the main duties would be to lead the day-to-day operations, oversee motor vehicle registration, entitlement functions, manage staff, maintain compliance with state and federal regulations, all at the Motor Vehicle Department Branch Office. We are requiring an associate's degree plus three years of experience in supervisory. This would fall in grade 15 on the general pay scale and would be non-exempt. City staff have reviewed and are recommending approval for this.
We deal with that one first, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions on the Branch Office Manager for the Motor Vehicle Department Title Department? If there are no questions, I would look for a motion to approve this job description.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. You have an additional positions, Ms. Nomenek?
Yes, thank you. Title and Registration Technician is the next one we're gonna talk about. This position would be the frontline representative of the Motor Vehicle Department Branch Office. They will support the motor vehicle registration, titling services, maintain accurate records, and comply with legal standards. We're just looking for a high school diploma or a GED, prior experience in motor vehicle titling, customer service, or like an administrative assistant type role. This position will fall on the general pay scale at a grade 12 and would be non-exempt. City staff have reviewed and are, is looking for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions on the tech position? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And Ms. Nomenek, you have the HR monthly report.
Okay, so it doesn't look like it's coming across here.
Somebody cut you off.
There we go, okay. Back up here. Okay, so these, this information was prepared on July, on June 11th, just to be clear. For the Police Department, we have the police officer position currently with four openings and taking applications for that. Public safety. Public Safety Telecommunicator, we have one opening. We did make a hire, Courtney Wilson. And then Corporal Police Officer, we had another internal opening, and Alex Schroeder was promoted there. Fire Department, we have firefighter, firefighter, paramedic positions that we're trying to fill. We did recently make a hire to Samantha Lawler, and I had an interview today. So hopefully we'll be filling those real soon. Part-time firefighter, we have two opening. Ben Okletree recently worked for us and came back to the city. And then we have someone in the background. Public Works, Street Maintenance Operator, I believe we have interviews tomorrow for that. We did have two openings, we did hire Dennis Sinclair, and then we'll be doing interviews tomorrow. Solid Waste Operator, one opening, and that has been reopened. Buildings and Ground, we have one opening, and we do have someone in the background stage for Buildings and Grounds Operator. Solid Waste Laborer, one opening, and we're, that's for a seasonal position, and we have, are doing interviews on that. And then Utility Operator Full-Time Position, we do have one opening. Project Engineer, we have one opening, and that is being advertised right now. So we're hoping to do interviews on that soon. Deputy Finance Director, one opening. We did do interviews for this and have made a conditional offer, so we'll be in the background stage. Seasonal Programming Assistant for Legacy Square, we had one opening. We rehired Macy Wary to help us out on a part-time basis. And then the Maintenance Worker, we did interviews and made an offer. So looking forward to filling both of those. Deputy Clerk at Court, one, we did hire Asia Phillips, and she's been working for us already this week. And we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenick. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenick on the monthly HR report? All right, thank you. Move to the 5:00 public hearing. First up this evening, we have the swearing-in of some new police officers.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Commission, President. I respectfully object to the swearing-in process as it is currently being conducted. The oath form being used by the City of Dickinson does not meet the legal requirements set by the state of North Dakota. According to North Dakota Center Code, Subsection 44-01-05, all public officers must take, subscribe to the oath, to the official state oath, Form SFN 11501. That form is to be issued by the Secretary of State and includes requirements, elements such as a notarization and a statement under penalty of perjury. The version being used here today lacks those elements, and as such, does not comply with state laws. Proceeding with this oath could result in the officers not being properly or legally sworn in. It could expose the city to legal challenges or the liability. Jason, I'm talking, get off your phone. That is disrespectful to the people. Because, see, okay. I respectfully request the City Commission pause this action and instead require the use of proper SFN 11501 form in accordance with state law. This is not about preference, it's not, it's about following North Dakota law to ensure our officers and our city are fully protected. I have a copy of the official oath form and the applicable statute with me if you would like to review them. I'll leave them right there so these officers can see them. Thank you.
Chief Ciani.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. I am here this evening to introduce three Dickinson Police Officers who were hired last year. Now, these officers were hired last year, but I'd like to remind the commission that since I became chief, I actually administer an oath of office after they are, received their limited license, and while they received their badge, they actually completed an oath. So that was done quite a while ago, back in June or July, I don't remember which. But with that, we bring this, bring them forward for introductions and to do a formal oath in front of the commission so you can get to know who these officers are we're hiring and learn a little bit about them. So with that, I will begin introducing Officer Brian Stager. Brian stands next to me. Brian is originally from Wyoming and is a graduate of Pine Bluffs High School. Following graduation, he moved to Dickinson to attend Dickinson State University. He played two years of football and four years of track before graduating with an associate's degree in criminal justice here in Dickinson. Brian also attend, he also worked one semester at the Police Department as an intern. Brian was hired by the Dickinson Police Department in June of 2024. He graduated from the Law Enforcement Training Academy in December of 2024, and he has since completed his field training. Next, we have Officer Justin Berger. Some of you may be familiar with him from the Street Department. He's been striving to become a police officer for quite a while, and very proud of Justin for his accomplishing what he's been after here for quite a while. Justin is a Dickinson native and a graduate of Dickinson High School. Following graduation, Justin was hired by the City Street Department, which he spent three years. He also was a volunteer for the Rural Fire Department here in Dickinson. In May of 2024, Justin was hired by the Dickinson Police Department. He also has graduated from the North Dakota Law Enforcement Training Academy in December of 2024, and he has completed his field training as well. Next, we have Officer Austin Dennis. Austin is originally from Montana and a graduate of Park City High School. Following graduation, he moved to Dickinson to attend Dickinson State University, where he played four years of football before graduating with bachelor's degree in criminal justice. While attending college in DSU, he also was an intern for the Dickinson Police Department. Austin was hired by the Dickinson Police Department in June of 2024. He has graduated from the North Dakota Law Enforcement Training Academy in December of 2024 and has since completed his field training. With that, I would welcome you to come up and administer the oath.
I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
The Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
Uphold, uphold the Home Rule Charter.
Uphold the Home Rule Charter.
Municipal Code of the City of Dickinson.
Municipal Code of the City of Dickinson.
North Dakota.
North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully, faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a Dickinson Police Officer.
The duties of a Dickinson Police Officer.
Of the City of Dickinson.
Of the City of Dickinson.
Stark County, North Dakota.
Stark County, North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen. Well, I know we have quite the formal introduction by chief, but if you have anything more you wish to say?
Yep, like I said, I'm Brian Stager, from Wyoming. Just happy to be here and serve this community.
I'm Justin Berger, grew up here, just happy to stay here and serve the community.
Austin Dennis, I'm excited to be a part of this career field and excited to see where it's going to take me in life.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Our next presentation this evening will be by the Dickinson Airport Manager, Mr. Brown. This is related to our terminal.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Kelly Braun, Airport Manager here at Dickinson Municipal Airport. Thanks for having me back. It's been a while since I've been here and made a formal presentation in front of y'all. I think last time I was here, I asked for a letter of support for a new commercial terminal project at the Dickinson Airport, which you kindly provided. We've been very busy since then, and I'm going to give a presentation, get you guys up to speed on where we're at with that project. So one of the questions I get all the time is, why do we need this brand-new facility? The current terminal that we're in right now was constructed in the early 2000s. The building was built to accommodate about 9,000 passengers per year. And as you can see by this chart, we are well in excess of that. Last year, we had a record year, we have about 26,000 employments. If you double that number, it's 52,000 folks traveling in and out of our facility, which is a phenomenal number considering the population of Dickinson. This facility gets used every single day, multiple times a day, and we predict to see those numbers increase in the future. Couple of the existing issues that we have with our current terminal, like I mentioned, the terminal is undersized, we've had increased passenger demands. We've also seen increased TSA requirements for screening and equipment. And then the upgauging in aircraft. When the terminal was built in the early 2000s, we had piston-powered aircraft, very small. We went from that to turboprops, 19 passengers and 30 passengers. And today, we have the CRJ 200 providing service in and out of Dickinson. That's a 50-seat regional jet. We also have some current issues with ADA requirements in our existing facility. And like I said, this structure was designed and built before we had jet service here in Dickinson. This is the location of the new proposed terminal. The existing facility in the upper left-hand corner there, and then the new position, or the new location is about a quarter mile south on Highway 22, a brand-new greenfield location for parking lot, terminal building itself, the ramp area, and the connecting taxiways. As we went through this process, we looked at each of the individual stakeholders and what their requirements are needed for the new facility. TSA, the airline, car rental agencies and such, baggage handling facilities, admin offices, and what, how much square footage are we going to need in this new facility? The new facility is about 27,000 square feet. It's right-sized for what we have right now, and as I'll get into here in a little bit, some of the future, predicted future demands on this facility as well. But about 27,000 square foot facility. Here's kind of a 30,000-foot view of where we're at. Like I mentioned previously, Highway 22 is there on the right side of this slide, and the proposed location's kind of in between our crosswind runway and our main runway. Improvements to Highway 22, off the highway into the parking lot, through the, through the new terminal, out onto the aircraft on the new ramp, and then two taxiways that connect to the parallel taxiway on our newly reconstructed runway 32. This is kind of the overall plan. It's a little bit tough to see this layout, but as we get into here in a couple of slides, hopefully this kind of will make a little bit more sense. But we have two entries. This building faces to the east, the main entrance to the east. We come through what we kind of call the grand hall into the ticketing counters and the self-serve kiosks, and then to the right will be the TSA screening equipment. Very happy to announce that TSA screening equipment will not require individuals to be so intimately searched, shall we say, and for checked bags, same thing. Checked baggage will be able to be screened without having to hand screen every single piece of baggage that comes to the facility. So huge upgrades there. Moving into the passenger holding area, we have seats for about 100 or so passengers with modern conveniences. We have a service animal relief area, we have a wellness room, updated restroom facilities, and an updated family restroom as well. This is an exterior view, landside from the parking lot, looking at the, at the new building. As you can see, very modern design, a lot of glass, nice, warm, inviting. We're super happy with this. We looked at a number of different designs when we went through this, and this was kind of where the Airport Board landed. We're, we're very proud of this design, and we think it's going to serve the community for years to come. This is an exterior view of the airside. So all the glass that you see on the left side of this picture is the passenger holding area, and obviously a jet bridge out to the aircraft. The jet bridge is nothing new, but for Dickinson, brand-new, and we're super excited to have it. Not being able, or not having to battle weather conditions, snow, rain, ice, the heat of the summer makes everything much, much easier. And like I mentioned, the, the windows in the passenger holding area, these windows overlook the entire airfield, and they look off to the west with some really commanding views of the North Dakota Prairie and highlighted, silhouetted kind of on the horizon, the beautiful beauts that we have in the background. This is the aerial view of the facility. As you can see, the ramp, we have two aircraft in the back there and the connecting taxiways. So terminal financials, this is, this is the area that everybody is most interested in, and I want to give you a little bit of update on where we're at. The funding plan for this project's $53.4 million, and that includes the improvements from Highway 22, the parking lot, the terminal, the ramp, and the connectors out to our parallel taxiway. We anticipate about $12 million in federal funding, $7 million of that will be in discretionary, excuse me, 2.4 of that in passenger entitlements, and then 2.6 in AIG. State funding is $30.6 million. We had a direct allocation through Senate Bill, I think it was 1006, was your North Dakota Aeronautics Commission Bill. There were three airports that lobbied collectively to the, to the state legislature this year. We asked for $120 million for three generational projects in Fargo, Grand Forks, and Dickinson. Dickinson was asking for $30 million, but after the the income projections for the next coming two years, those, that income level was reduced, the projections were down, so they reduced those amounts. The Dickinson Airport received $25 million in direct allocation through the North Dakota Aeronautics Commission, and then the City of Dickinson will receive $4.2 million in Senate Bill 2323. That will go directly towards this project. The North Dakota Aeronautics Commission also funded $1.4 million for the terminal design and, terminal study and design. Our local funding are projected to be about $10.8 million, and we would, we're hoping to split that up through multiple different entities, the Airport Authority, the City of Dickinson, Stark County, Dunn County, and Billings County. The airport has got $2 million pledged for this project, about 15% of the project cost. The funding request tonight for the City of Dickinson is $4 million. Stark County, which I met with a week or so ago, at $4 million was the funding request there. Dunn County met with their commissioners a week or so ago at $2 million. Billings County, which I met with them a week or so ago at $800,000. Happy to report that both Dunn County and Billings County, which have no obligation to provide any support for this project at all, are welcoming of this project and are in favor of this project. When I was at the Dunn County Commission meeting, I gave them this same presentation and the funding request for $2 million. I thought it would come next year, but because of some of the projects that they had on the books up there, we were able to secure that $2 million this year. We actually received that check. We actually received that check last week, and it's in the bank and waiting to put that money to work. So very happy about, about that and the support in Dunn County. Going back to the reconstruction of our main runway, we also went to Dunn County and Billings County and asked for participation in those projects, of which both Dunn and Billings County participated. So we're super happy that they see the value in this project moving forward. Here's an interior view. Like I mentioned, when you walk through the main entrance, this is a, kind of the, the first impression that you get. Off to the right's difficult to see here, but that would be towards TSA screening. Straight ahead and to the left, we have the airline ticket counters and the self-check-in kiosks. And if you look straight in the middle of this photograph, as you walk through that, this goes all the way to the back of the building. And again, those big windows on that backside, looking straight west, good place for family members to wait while folks depart Dickinson on the aircraft. And, and really just a, a nice place to kind of hang out and take in the, the scene. If you want to go out and hang out at the airport, watch airplanes take off and land, that's a prime spot to do that. As you're looking to the left, this is kind of the interior view of the lounge area. This faces to the east. This faces out towards the parking lot. Nice, comfortable area here to wait while TSA opens, you can arrive early, nice, comfortable place to relax. We also have two areas in, in this space reserved, one for the Presidential Library and the other for the Dickinson Museum. Kind of draw people into those areas of interest here, here locally in Dickinson. We're super happy about that. This is a picture of the interior holdroom after you pass through security. And again, those windows looking off to the east. I wish this rendering actually depicted that view from that passenger holdroom. It's, it's really going to be something spectacular. One of the key elements of this building that I, that I'd really like to highlight is the fact that it's a single-plane entry. So from the highway through the parking lot, through the building, and onto the aircraft, there are no stairs, no elevators, no escalators, which reduces the cost of construction, reduces the operating costs, and just the ease of passengers moving through the facility. So we're super, super excited about that. This facility will be kind of like on a, like a walkout basement, so to speak, with all the baggage screening and facilities on the, on the ground floor. And then we have like a seven-foot or so area above that where the passenger holding room is. So we're super, super happy about this design. One of the other things that I really wanted to point out, too, is when we were developing the plan for this, we kind of said to the architects, "Show us, you know, show us something really, really nice." And they did. They did exactly that. And they came back with a facility that was way above budget. So we took another look at some of the construction materials, construction methods, and instead of a lot of wood, a lot of high-grade interior finishes, we went with something more traditional, steel and glass, a lot of veneers, which brought the cost down substantially. We're looking at about $34 million or so for the, for the terminal building itself. And we, that's right where our, where our budget needed to be. We're, we're shooting for about $33.5 million or so. They came in at 34. So we're right where we needed to be. Vertical construction projects here in the area have been coming in under bid, so when this goes out to bid here in August, September timeframe, we're hoping to see some of those as well. And in which case, we would reduce, of course, the local share of funding for this project. And with that, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions on the airport terminal? I think we've talked about this for a very long time, so I'm glad we're finally getting to the end game on this. And I, I know we have, we have talked about our commitment to you at the airport, and I guess I would just look for that we can give a verbal commitment to the, what they have asked for, the $4 million tonight, that we will give a verbal commitment to match that, hoping that the bids do come in at a, a lower price. But if there's any other comments or questions for Mr. Brown? Not I'd look for that motion, then.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we give a verbal commitment for the $4 million to pay for, help pay for the new terminal.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate all the past support, future support. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a public hearing for the Badlands Storage Easement Vacation. This will be presented by Planner Burcek.
Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting an easement vacation for this utility easement that's located on that southwestern portion of Tweetin's Third Edition, Lot 1, Block 1 of Tweetin's Third Edition, located in the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 140 North, Range 96 West, located in the City of Dickinson. So the purpose of this easement vacation is requested by the applicant. They are looking to combine these lots and expand that existing convenience storage that you see on the south part of that Badlands Storage Lot. And part of their building plans would overlap with that easement, so they're looking to vacate it. The applicant is present online to answer any questions that you guys might have, but we've received no public comments about this project. We've gotten signatures from the applicant from any electric or cable or internet companies saying that they don't have any equipment in that area, so staff recommends approval of this vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions for Ms. Burcek before we go to the public hearing? Questions, all right. I will open up the public hearing. If anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns on the Badlands Storage Easement Vacation, please come forward, state your name. Let us know your concerns. This is Resolution 17-2025. Anyone with any concerns about the Badlands Storage Easement Vacation? Anyone with any concerns? I'll close the public hearing for Resolution 17-2025, the Badlands Storage Easement Vacation. Commissioners, are there any further questions for Ms. Burcek? Not I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion on the Badlands Storage Easement Vacation, Resolution 17-2025? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Burcek, you have the Maryland Cook Rezone Request.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from low-density residential or R1 to medium-density residential or R2 for Lot 1 of Block 14 of the Cooks Meadow Hills Fourth Edition subdivision located within the City of Dickinson. So the purpose of this rezoning is to ensure lot development conforms with the R2 zoning that is currently in that surrounding area. So you remember those three lots that are just to the east of this property were recently rezoned to R2 based on a city commission motion that was done on the June 3 meeting. So the purpose of this rezone is just to make sure that all of those lots conform. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have. There's no plans for development currently submitted by the applicant for this lot. The rezone is just to make sure there's not an island of R1, but we've received no public comments, and staff recommends approval of this rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. This is Ordinance 1820, first reading. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the Maryland Cook Rezone Request? If there are no questions, then I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the community that wishes to come up and has any concerns, complaints, or requests of the Maryland Cook Rezone Request? Any questions on Ordinance 1820, the Maryland Cook Rezone Request? Anyone with any questions? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for city staff? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Oh, I guess you, you have the rest of them, too. I thought we had.
I have a whole lot of stuff.
You've got a whole lot of them tonight. All right, we have another public hearing. I, I thought the Park and Rec was going to handle this one, the Community Orchard Rezone, but I guess that falls upon you, Ms. Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from unzoned and community commercial or CC to public or P for part of Block 4 of the New Haven Second Edition subdivision located within the City of Dickinson. Purpose of this rezoning is to allow the Park District to utilize the space for plantings to establish a community orchard. You'll remember that this project previously came in front of city commission. It had two readings and was finally approved on, I believe, the May 6 meeting. But due to some staffing errors, there was an issue with getting it properly advertised for the planning and zoning, the original April planning and zoning that it was heard in front of. So we are bringing it back in front of city commission with the proper advertising. So staff has received some public comments about this property. The neighboring owner to the east has requested a fence be built along that eastern edge of the property as part of the, just a condition of this rezone. Staff does not support that requirement. There's nothing in the municipal code requiring parks and rec to be screened from community commercial districts. Beyond that, the applicant is also present to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff recommends approval of this rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions for city staff or the representative on this rezone request? This would be Ordinance 1821. Seeing, hearing no questions, I would open up the public hearing on the rezone, Ordinance And this is for the Community Orchard Rezone. Anyone wishes to come forward, please state your name. Let us know your concerns. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any questions on this rezone request? Seeing no one has any questions or concerns on the rezone request, Ordinance 1821, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Burcek, you have the Five Star Storage Special Use Permit.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So the applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit, application for a convenience storage facility expansion for 609 units. The convenience storage facility would be located on a 6.04-acre parcel at 430, 29th Street West in the City of Dickinson. The property is currently zoned as community commercial or CC. Similarly to the last project, this one was previously approved during the April, I believe April 20th, meeting of the city commission, but due to some staffing errors, it was not properly advertised during the April planning and zoning. So it's being brought in front of you again. Staff has yet to receive any public comments. The applicant is available online to answer any questions that you guys might have, and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined at the end of the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions for city staff on this SUP, Resolution 18-2025?
I forgot to add also contingent on approval of FLP-003-2025.
There are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward with any questions, concerns on the Five Star Storage SUP, please come forward, state your name. Anyone have any concerns on Resolution 18-2025, SUP for the Five Star Storage? Anyone with any concerns? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your desire?
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go into public safety, and we have a presentation from FIRE, and this will be presented by Chief Presell. This is the EMS Fee Schedule Update.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you tonight, seeking your approval to update slash amend the fee schedule we presented earlier this year, we have a couple of updates that we need to make. Everything in red that you see is a change. We just did some, some housekeeping with the document, but then we added flight crew transport for $450 for the first three hours, and then flight crew transport for anything over at $125 an hour. And then the rest of our changes are just to some of the training fee schedule as part of EMS. There, there's been some increases in what it's costing us to teach these classes, and over the last four months, we've taught probably 50 different CPR courses or other EMS-type courses to the community and to other responders. So we, we now have the data to support what we need to charge, so we wanted to make those changes. And then with some of the additional staff that we've brought on, we're able to increase the level of training we're able to provide to the community and to other responders. So we've also made some of those changes into the fee schedule there at the bottom. And then we had to increase some of our prices to some of the CPR courses, just based on what, what it's costing us to provide the courses. And then with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief President. Any questions on the, the fee schedule update for EMS? And this is a resolution, so this will be 19-2025. If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion. Commissioners?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Passing off duties. Had you, you had you down here to, to give this, but, you know, put the deputy chief in charge of it, so.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is just a, we're trying to put our ladder one into surplus. This is a, the truck that was replaced by Tower 2. It's, has served this community well for almost three decades, and we need the space for EMS. So we're just looking to, consider to approve that, put this on surplus. It is 1996 Pierce Quantum. Like I said, it's a 100-foot lateral, or 100-foot quint ladder.
Like I said, it's a hundred-foot, or a hundred-foot quint ladder. And this, would like to get the surplus. We have looked into third-party to sell this thing with Brenly Mountain to try to get the best value for the surplus of this piece of equipment.
Okay, this is Resolution 20-2025 to place this vehicle in surplus. Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into community development. We have a public engagement meeting for downtown parking. City Planner Burcheck?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, the purpose of this announcement is just to inform you that there will be a public engagement meeting taking place in City Commission chambers on June 25th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, the meeting is regarding a proposal for a 90-minute parking limitation along three roads in downtown Dickinson. So, it would apply to First Avenue West and Sim Street from Vallard Street to Second Street, as well as First Street West and East from Second Avenue West to First Avenue East. Did not include a map. But, the purpose of this public engagement meeting is just to encourage business owners and residents that visit the downtown to provide their feedback on whether or not they would generally support or oppose this kind of parking limitation being implemented in downtown. These streets were chosen, they kind of all end at a public parking lot, which can provide a space for people, particularly employees of the downtown businesses to park during business hours. And then this 90-minute limitation encourages more cycling through customers that are just visiting these businesses, to only park 90 minutes, do their shopping, and then leave and let new customers come in, to just kind of encourage better usage of downtown businesses. There is no action required, but I am here to answer any questions that you guys might have about the proposal.
Just, will there be enforcement?
Yeah, so it'll, after talking with PD, it'll primarily be complaint-driven enforcement. So, if somebody's parked in front of a business for multiple hours at a time, then we'll get a call from that business owner, who can usually provide some kind of, like, security camera footage that shows that that person has been parked there for a while. There will be routine enforcement, but primarily the goal is to make it complaint-driven.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would encourage people, especially business owners and individuals that work and live downtown, to come to this meeting, express your ideas or your concerns, so. And I get you, I guess you get to stay right up here. We get the final plat for the 16th Street Business Plaza Minor Subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a minor subdivision plat for the 16th Street Business Plaza Edition subdivision located within the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 34 Township 140 North Range 96 West, located within the city of Dickinson. The proposed minor subdivision is a replat of Lot One, Block One of the Dover Edition, and a replat of Lot A of the Western Second Edition. An unplatted portion of Section 34 Township 140 North Range 96 West is also included as part of the proposed minor subdivision plat. According to the applicant, the purpose of this proposed subdivision is to divide the land into two separate lots, with the intent of selling each lot separately. The site is zoned community commercial, or CC, and the proposed subdivision is approximately 1.213 acres. Similarly, this plat was previously heard during the April 22nd meeting and was approved by City Commission. Due to the planning and zoning advertising error, it is being heard in front of you guys again. We received no public comments about this plat. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant also has a representative here to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcheck. Any questions on the 16th Street Business Plaza Minor Subdivision? This will be Resolution 21-2025. Are there any questions, Commissioners? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Burcheck, you have the Jerry Williams subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcheck, City Planner. The applicant is requesting approval of a final, final major subdivision plat for the Jerry Williams subdivision located within the southeast quarter of Section 22 Township 139 North Range 96 West, located in the city of Dickinson's extraterritorial zone. According to the applicant, the purpose of this proposed subdivision is to divide the land into appropriately-sized lots for each of the residents that are currently living in that tract. The site is zoned agriculture, or AG, and the proposed subdivision is roughly 35.66 acres. This public hearing was heard in front of Planning and Zoning Commission on the preliminary plat back in February. This one was previously heard at the City Commission meeting on that April 22nd meeting, but is brought back in front of you due to the advertising error of planning and zoning. A road maintenance agreement was also submitted to the city that allows that private access road to still have some private maintenance from those landowners. We have received no public comments at this time. The applicant has a representative here that can answer any questions, and staff recommends approval of this plat.
Thank you, Ms. Burcheck. This is Resolution 22-2025, Jerry Williams subdivision. Commissioners, any questions? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have the final plat for the Badland Storage subdivision. Ms. Burcheck?
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcheck, City Planner. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a minor subdivision plat for the Badland Storage Second Edition subdivision, being a replat of Lot One and Block One of the Badland Storage subdivision, and Lot One and Block One of Tweeton's Third Edition subdivision, located within the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 28 Township 140 North Range 96 West, located within the city of Dickinson. According to the applicant, the purpose of this proposed subdivision is to combine the existing lots to expand the existing convenience storage operations. The site is currently zoned community commercial, and the proposed subdivision is roughly 6.04 acres. Again, this plat was previously approved during the April 22nd City Commission meeting. And staff has received no public comments about this plat since then. The applicant is available online to answer any questions that you might have, and staff recommends approval, subject to the approval of a special use permit 001-2025.
Thank you, Ms. Burcheck. This is Resolution 23-2025. That's the final plat for the Badland Storage subdivision. Commissioners, any questions for city staff? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then, Ms. Burcheck, you have the Reddish Corner Edition subdivision.
Last one. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a minor subdivision plat for the Reddish Corner Edition subdivision, which is located in the northwest corner of Section Three Township 139 North Range 96 West, located in the city of Dickinson. So, the proposed minor subdivision is a replat of a portion of Lot One of Block Six of the Hilliard and Manning's Third Edition subdivision. According to the applicant, the purpose of this proposed subdivision is to combine the properties to comply with Section 62-4771 of the zoning ordinance prohibiting private garages on a residential lot without an existing primary structure. So, you can see that there's just a garage located on that northern lot that currently does not have an existing structure, as it was demolished a couple of years ago. The two existing properties are Zoned Low Density Residential, or R1, and the proposed subdivision is roughly 0.385 acres. The applicant is present to answer any questions that you guys might have. We have not received any public comments regarding this plat, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcheck. This is 24-2025, the Reddish Corner Edition subdivision. Are there any questions, Commissioners, for city staff? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a Civil Science Entrance Sign Survey and Design Support. This will be presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for your consideration, is a contract amendment with Civil Science to provide survey exhibits and documentation for a right-of-way application with the North Dakota DOT for placement of the entrance signs. The DOT has conditionally approved the locations of the entrance signs on the main and north, the main north and east entry points along Highway 22 and the I-94 East Business Loop. The amendment will be for $6,914 on a time and material not-to-exceed basis, and this work will be funded through the hospitality tax. The city attorney has reviewed this contract amendment, and city engineering staff recommends approval. The city map is on the handout I gave you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions for Mr. Keller on the Civil Site, Civil Science Entrance Sign Survey and Design Support?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Bear.
Mr. Keller, just a question. Are these signs going to be lit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The intent is to have them backlit, as opposed to having light shine upon them. It's fancier.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Keller? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Keller, you have a Brown InterTech contract for geotechnical services.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for your consideration, is a contract with Brown InterTech to provide geotech services for various 2026 projects. The geotechnical services include pavement coring, test borings, SAM review with laboratory testing, and engineering analysis with reporting and recommendations. These services are essential for proper roadway and foundation design to maximize the service life of the city's infrastructure. These 2026 projects include the 2026 utility, Street Utility Project, the 2026 Road Maintenance, Fourth Street East, Fifth Street East, 26th Avenue East, Street in Stormwater, the Ninth Street West and Fifth Avenue West Intersection Safety, and the 21st Street West from State Avenue to Third Avenue West, Mill and Overlay. The amendment, excuse me, the contract will be for $112,000 and, excuse me, $112,048 on a time and material basis, and this work will be funded through the various projects. The city attorney has reviewed this contract, and the engineering staff recommend approval. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on the Brown InterTech geotechnical services? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a Vallard RRFB Preliminary Engineering Reimbursement Agreement with the North Dakota DOT. This will be presented by Engineer and Community Development Director Skoloszczek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration, is a reimbursement agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation to fund a portion of the preliminary engineering for the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, or RRFB, located at the intersection of First Street West and Vallard. This is a cost share of 90% from the Federal Highway Administration, 5% from the North Dakota Department of Transportation, and 5% from the city of Dickinson. The estimated cost for this couple of works is $75,000, as specified in the North Dakota DOT agreement. The project funding is based on a request through the Highway Safety Improvement Program through the Federal Highway Administration. And this ultimately got brought up as we were working through some public feedback related to the Highway 22 Traffic Signal Replacement Project a little over a year ago. Feedback was related to the existing amber lights utilized, and then ultimately being difficult to see, especially near dawn and dusk periods. The updates to this would be more similar to what you see on State Avenue near the high school, where it's a bright white light, much higher speed of flash, and so some programming, lighting, all those kind of things would be upgraded associated with this. Engineering staff recommends approval. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Skoloszczek. Any questions on, I guess, basically changing the color of light and the pattern, right, is what essentially it amounts to for safety reasons on Vallard there? Any questions? There are no questions, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. That ends our public comments section. I mean, ends our normal agenda. Now, we will have public comments, not on the agenda. First up, this evening, that has signed up Seth Helgason, recent events, city attorney, prosecutor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Seth Helgason. Everyone's familiar with me. This has been an ongoing issue for two years. I want to go over the last few months. Over the past several months, I've been the target of a calculated and disturbing abuse of power led by none other than the city attorney, city prosecutor, Christina Wanko. Rather than upholding justice, Ms. Wanko has chosen to weaponize the very system meant to protect families. She has used child protective services, child support enforcement, and legal proceedings as a tool of retaliation, not for justice, but for personal revenge. Her mission has been clear, silence a father who dares to speak the truth. She has made multiple attempts to destroy my relationships with my children, not because it benefits them, but because she views my presence as a threat to her power. One of the most disturbing examples of this abuse came when I discovered my own attorney was working against me. Under her influence, I fired him publicly in front of the courtroom, at least 40 people. I don't know why she thought it was a good idea to let me go first. That was not part of her plan. In direct retaliation, she rushed a no-contact order that same very second she was on her phone messaging the victim coordinator, Katie Cable, clearly trying to prevent me from spending time with my children on Father's Day, but it failed. I still saw them, and I always will. No order born or of. No order borne or of retaliation will ever erase me from their lives. What followed was a cover-up. An official court order claimed that an attorney was permitted to withdraw. That is false. I fired him for colluding with the city prosecutor, even more disturbing. The order originated in the municipal courtroom, and was already prepared for the district judge's signature. They had something planned. That's not a clerical error. It was intentional, a calculated move to manipulate the process and protect their narratives. Now, once again, Ms. Wanko refuses to comply with my discovery requests. She is actively withholding evidence I am entitled to in my defense. This is not simple oversight. It is obstruction. This is not a city attorney or prosecutor who represents the values of Dickinson. This is someone who undermines the justice system to serve herself. Let's be honest, Christina Wanko has to play dirty to beat a father who is playing fair. And now that my filings are stronger, my arguments are sharper, and my documentations are getting better, she's losing control, and it shows. Her ego has grown so large, she believes she is untouchable, but the federal court doesn't play by her rules. The Constitution cannot be manipulated. She will not be able to distort the supreme law of the land. That is why I'm letting you guys know today. I'm filing a $200 million lawsuit against the city of Dickinson. I intend to hold every official involved in this abuse accountable. In their official capacity, titles do not protect you from the consequences of violating someone's right. There is no price tag on the bond between a father and his children. Thank you.
Our next public comment sign-up is Ryan Masano, voter fraud 2024, Masonic Lodge in Dickinson. Did I read that correctly?
Yes. Good evening, Council and citizens. Joe Riddle was right. There are some topics which take a good 15 minutes or so to address, and tonight's is going to be one of them. I'm going to reiterate a request that the speech regulations be lifted. There are definitely things that need to be addressed, and the speech regulations do nothing but impede the transparency and the ability of citizens to run their government, not government to run the citizens. We are supposed to run the government. The government is not supposed to run us. We need to talk about the 2024 mayoral election. In that election, Leroy Hendrickson, as has been noted in the past, but needs to be noted again, turned in 400 signatures. I looked at those signatures, and as I'm led to understand, Ms. Binstock scratched out about 100 of those over a very dubious and ambiguous. The sign-up sheet says Dickinson and zip codes. It appears that either one is available. She decided to read it a different way and scratched out 100 signatures, thus disqualifying a candidate for the mayoral position, which is really unconstitutional. That's a citizen who qualifies is not allowed to qualify in the city. But moving on, I wanted to discuss something which affects the events of today, where actually now at war, and that actually connects very directly to each city in this nation, because there's an underlying network that has enabled what is happening at the national level. And it deals, I want to talk tonight about the Masonic associations that are in virtually every city in America. Now, at first glance, we go to the website, and I went to the website. I saw a picture of Mr. Bear, who has served as a master mason, which that takes quite a bit of work. And it says, "Love, Brotherhood, Commitment." The Freemasons actually started in Dickinson in 1889, the same year that this state became a nation, or this state became, this state became part of America. And, but this, the Freemasons, what they're up to, you know, they have secret codes and secret rituals and secret oversight, and they're a, as I mentioned before, some of these problems are international. These are fraternal international associations. You have the Moose, the Elk, the Lions, the, Mayor, you're a member of the American Legion. These are all international and national associations. They have oversight, which we are not aware of. They have, it doesn't make sense. Like, you give a pizza party for the city, and that's the whole reason why your organization exists? Okay. They're actually, before Lincoln, was a know-nothing party, which strongly opposed Freemasonry. But I think, you know, in 1970, there was a movie that came out. It's called Brotherhood of the Bell. It's a very good one. And it actually doesn't name Freemasonry, but it actually shows exactly what goes on in these secret rituals and secret lodges. And when anyone in there, so Mr. Bear, even if he wanted to say what goes on, is unable to do so, because the repercussions will be severe. There's actually two books written on this. The first one is The Secret Powers Behind Revolution: Freemasonry and Judaism. That was written by Leon de Poncins in 1929. The other one is in 1789, because Freemasonry was actually co-opted after the American Revolutionary War. So Freemasonry, some of the founders were Masons, but you'll understand that the French Revolution and the American Revolution were dramatically different. Because Freemason, Adam Weisott was a Catholic who became a Jewish over the Masonic associations. And that secret leadership is what is behind all of the Masons, and the college fraternities are involved as well. But, you know, if you read that, and there's dozens of other books on my website which chronicle what these organizations are up to, and in a nutshell, what happens is this: men in these organizations are funded. They are given money. They are given power. They are given prestige, and they are raised up in the community. So when the men are raised up, they're looked up to as respectable members of the community, not wacky conspiracy theorists like yours truly. And then they are raised up into positions of respect. And then members of the community, particularly women, they look up and they're like, oh, this man is, you know, a respectable person. We should have him in an elected position. They get into elected position, but their oversight and their orders come from higher positions. They are not making these decisions on their own. So of course, they always, oh, we don't know anything about this. This is a crackpot theory. But, you know, after studying this in hundreds of countries, and, because Freemasonry is literally in every city in this nation, I'm of the opinion that these Masonic lodges and these fraternal organizations must be done away with, and we need to eliminate the control of international organizations in our cities. I can't see a good reason why people are hiding things in these organizations. So I think when that's done, I think that will solve a lot of our problems, and that's all I have for the evening. Thank you.
Our next public comment sign-up is Dave Bedoin. Able to speak more?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to agree with what Brian is saying. My experience with this, these fraternities is that when I was a young man growing up, we had fraternities meeting out in the country. And one location was south of Dickinson, on the road to Regent, and they'd come out of their cars and form a circle. And if anybody's aware of that, that is a COVID. So we had that interaction going on in Dickinson, I'd say about in the middle of the 1970s. Also, at that time, they had cattle mutilations, and I believe that secret societies are also involved in it. My concern is that secret societies can have influence on the community, and the community is not aware of their agenda. So the people, what they want to say and do is not heard, because it's overly overwhelmed by a fast-paced society and people who support these fraternities. And for our people, we should always be on guard for secret societies. I know everybody's different, and everybody has a different viewpoint, but when you get people coming together in a group, and they have power and influence, they can override what the public says. Thank you.
Commissioners, that is the end of the public comments. This is your time, commission comments.
I guess I just, I have one thing I wanted to bring up. I know there have, for, since we have stopped the live stream, I've had a myriad of comments. I would see it was about 70, 30% on, in support of what I did. I know other commissioners have different things. The one thing that I would emphasize is at one point, when we were making the public comment sign-up sheet, we wanted to limit it to what we could deal with. And again, I would have no problem going back to having a live stream as if the actual problems that we deal with are here, and something that we, as a commission, can deal with. But having irrelevant topics and people just talking about something that we can't affect, just something to consider for future meetings, to possibly amend that public comments section, and then maybe looking at having the ability to go back on live, just for some consideration of some people within the city, so.
Mr. President, I will echo that. I've had, I would say closer to 50, 50 people reach out to me in favor of the live stream or in favor of us eliminating it for, you know, the certain reasons that we did. But I agree, these comment sections on issues that don't affect the city or are not actionable by this board just make no sense. I mean, even the comments tonight from Mr. Masano, I don't know, are we supposed to kick the Elks out of the city or kick the Masons out of the city? I mean, it's something that we, we as a commission, don't have any control over. I don't know where they think we can operate here and just do whatever we want, but that's just not how it works. So I'm open to looking at that public comments section. I'm open to looking at all aspects of it, you know? We did have a new state law that passed this session that put some rules in and some limitations that we can adhere to, and I'd be open to having another discussion on it at possibly the next commission meeting, so. And then maybe with those changes, then we could all agree to turn the live feed back on on YouTube, so.
Ms. President.
Commissioner Bear?
Ms. Wanko, I would agree with what the mayor and Commissioner Frederick have said, and I've been thinking a lot about this. I too, I would like to amend the motion that I made, because I do think live feed is important. There are people that don't pay for cable anymore, and I wasn't thinking about that when I made the motion. So I would, I would be open to revisiting that and resuming live feed, and looking into maybe adopting the state recommendations.
Commissioner Bear, I believe I had sent out to everyone the model policy that the League of Cities has sent out to everyone that mirrors our policy. But just for public input, again, the state law that will become effective August 1 will allow municipalities, school boards, counties, to limit the items for public comment to items that are on the agenda or on the preceding agenda. My understanding is that the county will also be hearing this at their, considering this at their July meeting as well, because, again, this law will become effective August 1, so we'll be able to see what they do as well. But we can certainly bring it forward. I can provide you a copy of the policy that, again, the League of Cities put out, which mirrors the policy that we put together as well. And again, we can, we can be flexible. We can, you know, make changes and so forth. The proposal that the League of Cities had put out limited the public comment to three minutes, not five. They had also indicated in their proposed draft that those items would be related to topics on the agenda or on the preceding agenda. So you have flexibility. Again, I think those are parameters that are set to allow certain levels of structure to how we present meetings and the information that's presented. But that will be your determination, but if the consensus of the board here is to bring that forward and to have that further discussion, then I'm sure City Administrator Dossinger can make that happen.
Okay.
We'll get that back on the agenda for the next commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to thank all you guys for the reconsideration on the live stream. Wasn't expecting that, but I thank you for that as well. I'll just reiterate again, I would be up for no restriction on it. I've talked to several people. I've had a lot of people reach out. Only a couple that were in agreeance to the cut, not very many at all that were in agreeance to any type of restriction on it. And I would continue to stand with the people on that one, so, thank you.
All right. There are no more comments. I'd look for a motion, did you?
So moved.
Second.